Okay, it's six o'clock and we're going to bring our August 25th, 2025 city council meeting to order. We are going to begin with roll call, please.
Sarchet?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Otis?
Here.
Item number three, approval of agenda, a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Item number four is a swearing ceremony, Officer Blake Pfeiferlich, and Chief, you're going to handle that. If you raise your right hand, okay, I'll look. Here. I state your name.
I, Blake Pfeiferlich.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution, State Bible?
Constitution, State Bible.
Not faithfully, impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To the vestibility.
To the vestibility.
Discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Police officers, city.
Police officer of Polk City.
As now and thereafter required by law.
As here and now after required by law.
Okay, congratulations. Thank you, ladies. Now move on to item number five, which is life-saving ceremony and award. I'm going to call names and ask people to come forward in front of the dais here. So I'm going to ask Chief Carl Hoagre to come up and Police Chief Jeremy Sitcher, Alyssa Furey, Dave Fears, Bruce Hiving. Oh, sorry, Bryce Hiving. And then I. So this time we want to recognize you. This letter serves as a letter of recognition for your contribution to the response and life-saving measures that were administered to a young child involved in a drowning accident in Polk City. On August 8th, 2025, you all responded to assist a young boy that fell into a residential swimming pool. Upon arrival, CPR was administered and the young boy was transported to a local hospital.
Thank you.
Because of your quick response and actions, the little boy's life was saved. This was a group effort and we are very proud of our team and appreciate your dedicated service to the city of Polk City. To show you our appreciation, I'm giving you each the life-saving award from the city of Polk City. Thank you for your service to the community of Polk City and I'd like to ask for a round of applause at this time for these six outstanding individuals. Side here, so I'm going to give that to you too. I'll just stay here for just a minute because we're going to take a photo and I've asked council members to come forward and they've all said they'd like to come and shake their hands too. But first, before we do, members of the family are here and we'd like to give them a chance to say whatever they'd like to say.
I'll try. Hi, without you, I'm not sure he would be here today. I was thinking on Friday, so I teach at West Elementary and on Friday morning, we had our like staff meeting and Mr. Allison, our principal, had a word that we were working on and the word was grateful and it just, everything just kind of clicked for me. I said, I was so grateful for every single one of you because without you, I don't think I would have a two-year-old son anymore. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I know we all feel the same way. So, sorry, I guess I'm over emotional about it, but I seriously don't even have even more words to say, but, but thank you. We are so thankful for every single one of you. So, thank you.
You want to say thank you?
Do I say thank you? Say thank you. No. Sure, yeah, we will.
Council member?
Scoot together.
Okay, all right, we're going to take a couple.
Thank you guys. How much do you get paid?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where did my council agenda go? Sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, I've got it right here. I don't know how it made its way up there.
For the other, the other ones that came, appreciate you coming.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number six. This is the public comment period. This is a time and place for comments for any item other than those that are a public hearing. I know we have a couple of cards from people who wish to speak, so we're going to go ahead and start with that. Stacy, why don't you come up first? Welcome.
Hello, good evening, everybody. Stacy Allen, the Executive Director of Go Polk City Chamber and Economic Development, 101 East Bridge Road. I think that's all I have to say. I am here today to invite each of you and as well as everyone listening to our upcoming luncheons. Each month, Go Polk City hosts a luncheon with topics that not only support local businesses, but also strengthen our community. Everyone is welcome and we provide lunch for a small fee, but if you'd like to simply attend and listen, that's perfectly fine too. This month, our luncheon's actually this week, right here at City Hall, and we are honored to welcome Iowa Secretary of State Paul Pate and Chains Interrupted CEO and co-founder Teresa Davidson. They'll be addressing the realities of human trafficking in Iowa, Iowa's Businesses Against Trafficking Initiative, resources for victims, and practical ways we can all be a part of the solution. Human trafficking is modern-day slavery. It happens when people are forced, tricked, or coerced into labor or sex against their will. It can affect anyone in any community, even ours. And the first stop, step to stopping it is awareness. After the luncheon, we'll be doing a Red Sand Project, which is another project that brings awareness to it to help, to help get it stopped. So I hope that each of you can join us. On a lighter note, I'd like to remind everyone that our farmer's market is still going strong each Thursday through September. The last one will be the last Thursday of September. From 4:30 to 7:00, our farmer's market has been a big success. We've averaged over 700 visitors from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM every Thursday since it started. So that feels pretty great. This week, we're having a back-to-school scavenger hunt for kids with prizes and it should be a lot of fun. Also, mark your calendars for RV TV on September 9th. So it's the night before the big Si-Hawk showdown. We're having a community-wide tailgate on the square. Channel 13 will be broadcasting at 4, 5, and 6, oh, September 5th, sorry. That was the wrong date.
Too much going on for you to keep.
Too much, yeah. And I didn't know I was going to cry before I got up here, so. But Channel 13 will be broadcasting on, at 4, 5, and 6, and it should be a lot of fun. Then they'll head to North Polk to broadcast the game and we will play it on the square. So thank you for your time and your continued support.
Thank you, Stacy. So I also have a card from Dennis Kane. Dennis? Dennis, you'll just want to give your address, people.
704 West Van Dorn. I'm here on behalf of the Big Creek Historical Society. I'm aware that you're going to replace this staircase, the fire escape on the west side of the building and paint the building. And I did forward a list of materials from Advantage Lumber that specializes in hardwoods that last 75 years. And I just thought that, I mean, you would increase the cost of it by ordering the hardwoods for the treads and the railing, but it would be something that would probably last possibly 75 years or more. And I just wanted to point out that Roxanna looked into some of the old minutes back from the 60s when they built that addition onto the, the museum or the, the original schoolhouse. And they were talking then about whether they wanted to put that addition on this building that was already 100 years old. And if you go over and look at that addition at some of the Masonite siding in the windows and stuff, it's really kind of crumbling. And the museum is still good and probably is good for another 100 years. So I would just like to recommend that the city look, and they don't have to go through that company, but look at for replacing that staircase on some tropical hardwoods like Brazilian walnut or Brazilian redwood that will last like an extreme amount of time and you will not have to replace it, I mean, for years and years to come. And I noticed there's some bids in for the painting of the museum and I would like to, I did a little work and the front doorway to the museum, the jam, the trim, is solid walnut. Okay? And I think a lot of the framing for some of the windows is walnut too. And I'd like to see if you could specify when the painters do paint that, not that they just scrape that, but they literally sand it down to the original wood and then prime it because then it's going to last like forever and ever. So that's just, just a recommendation I have from my experience in restoration and restoring things.
Thank you, Dennis. Duly noted.
Thank you, Dennis, and we're not supposed to comment on these comments, but hopefully you're sticking around for the actual item and we can talk about it, some of those things you brought up then.
So we're going to move on then to consent items. Item number seven, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Moving on to item number eight.
Welcome, Allison. Go ahead.
Item number eight, professional engineering services agreement with Snyder and Associates for design of regional park Phase One project.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. For your consideration tonight is a professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates to do engineering services for Phase One of the regional park project. Everything that is within the scope of this includes the soccer fields, associated parking, modern restroom, a baseball, softball, practice quadrant, Phase Three of the Polk City Junction Trail, and the city's portion of the future Northeast Seventh Street. This was put out for RFP in July and in August. The, the committee did interview three different firms with Snyder and Associates being the recommendation of the committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Council, any questions? We'll ask for a motion to approve then. So moved. And a second.
Second.
And roll call.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
I'm staying.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Moving on to item B then, resolution to approve plat of survey for Bridgeview, Bridgeview Plat Two, Lot 14. Mike, you're presenting on that or Chelsea, who is presenting?
Travis.
Travis is presenting. And you're going to present on items one and two both?
Yeah, yep, yep. So for council's consideration tonight is a plat of survey for Bridgeview Plat Two, Lot 14. So this lot was originally platted as a single parcel as part of the Bridgeview Plat Two final plat. It was essentially a buildable parcel and then a detention basin located to the south. Our understanding is that, that the original developer, All Point, I think All Point's Development, wants to split the lot for the purposes of selling the buildable portion and the HOA managing the detention basin. It sounds like the, the eventual purchaser of this property doesn't want to have the detention basin on their, on their, on their property. And so they're splitting it. Polk City Code requires any platted lot to, when split again, to go through a plat of subdivision, but gives staff latitude to be able to approve the use of a plat of survey if no additional buildable parcels are being created. So as part of this plat of survey, it'll be Lot 14, the buildable portion, and then parcel, a separate unbuildable parcel that will be deeded to the Bridgeview Plat Two HOA. Also for council's consideration tonight is the approval of a sidewalk exhibit that we're calling construction drawings. For unbuildable parcels or sidewalks crossing overland flow adjustments or trail outlots, developers are required to put the sidewalk in along that street frontage as part of the plat improvements. That would have been originally included in the Bridgeview Plat Two construction drawings if it had been platted the way that it would, is going to be today. And so as part of this transaction, nap properties will be required to put in the sidewalk across the unbiddle, unbuildable portion of what will be that unbuildable parcel. So council.
Was that part always, sorry to interrupt, was that part always the plan for them to, to do that when?
So originally, it would have been whoever purchased and built on that lot, they would have been responsible for the entire frontage. But because they're being split now, we can't hold the person building the home on Lot 14 to building across that unbuildable parcel. If they had platted it the way that the lot lines are going to exist after this plat of survey, we would have made it, made them do it as part of the plat of, or the construction drawings for plat two.
Anything else?
Staff recommends approval of both the plat of survey and the construction drawings, subject to final legal document review, which it's our understanding that what we're waiting on is the treasurer's certificate and the person that issues those at Polk County is out of the office for about the next week. So the plat of survey will not be released for recording until the legal documents are in order.
Thank you, Travis, Council. Any questions, other questions?
So that's, that's currently the only sidewalk gap there on Pelican Drive right now, right?
That I'm not 100% sure of. Most of those homes out there are built. Anything that has a home on it will have a sidewalk on it. I think it's one of the last lots in that subdivision that it doesn't have a home on it.
I think there are still some other gaps, but just finalizing construction. This, this lot in particular is, I mean, it's different than pretty much everywhere else. And maybe it needs to be, but I, there's nothing to do about it now, I guess, but just seems like an odd fit. But then again, if that's true, I was part of the problem when it first went through. So what do I do?
Not going to argue with that.
Okay, well, moving on then, we will take them up individually. Number, number one is resolution to approve a plat of survey for Bridgeview Plat Two, Lot 14. Need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
And then number two, resolution to approve construction drawings for Bridgeview Plat Two, Lot 14. Motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Otis?
Yes.
Item C then, resolution to approve repairs on Big Creek Schoolhouse. Mike?
All right, in front of you tonight, we're requesting to make the repairs that came out of the, the condition assessment report that was completed by RDG that we had done back in April of '25. They had a list of repairs that should be made or they thought should be made. And we, we went out and solicited quotes for that work. And first choice renovations from Polk City here was the lowest bidder at this point for $30,500. Some of those repairs are collar ties up in the existing rafters to keep them from spreading. They, they showed evidence of that. Replace some siding as needed. Prep and paint the building and some spot repairs with some wood epoxy instead of replacing whole boards if it's needed and just spot repairs. So that's what that amount would be to, to do those repairs. Now, we all know that it's an old building and comes with that uncertainty. So we wanted to put an amount in there where if we saw some of these surprises in there, that we had the money to go ahead and make those repairs on the fly. That's why we would be suggesting that we not exceed $50,000 worth of managers, the city manager's approvals on those. So some of the money would be coming from, I believe, the Historical Society has received some, some grant money for $25,000 to help in the exterior repairs for the stairs and some of the painting, that type of thing. But the city has also put in $100,000 in the budget for repairs as well over there. So with the pricing that we received, we thought, okay, so this is going to be a two-fold, sorry, I'm going to step back. So that's what we're going to be asking for tonight is just what I spoke about. Then we wanted to see what the appetite was out of the council to move forward on possibly removing that north addition, if that's what the council would like to do. With the amount of money that's left over, it may be doable. I would like to investigate removing the electrical, the plumbing, the mechanical, all that work that has to be done. And we've reviewed it again, and I believe that Public Works can remove that structure after all of that stuff is done to save the money and, and save some money on that as well as removing the foundation. I think we can get to a point where we're very close, if not being under that, to get that removed, if that's what the council would elect to do. So I guess there's two part. We want to, we want to go move forward on the repairs that we talked about and we would like to move forward and bring it back at another date, just receive some quotes of what it's going to cost for all those items and get as close as we can to bring it back to you folks and see if it's something that you would like to do. So yeah, I will take any questions at this point on, on this project.
Council, any questions? Nick? Any questions?
Let's start off with just the renovation side before we get to anything else about tearing down. I don't have any questions on the renovation side.
Mandy?
No questions.
Jeff?
Nope.
Jeff?
Nope.
Rob?
So no questions, but to Dennis, to some of your concerns that you raised, so.
Well, it sounds like it's a, it's a two-fold project and wouldn't it be better to tear the addition down and then repair the siding and paint it all at once?
That addition, the addition's going to be a problem of its own. And it is attached in such a way that it's only attached to that side.
Yeah.
And there is some old siding and windows behind that addition. So
I'm aware of that.
We want to remove it. I know there's going to be some reciting that has to happen, but I don't know the extent of it. So we want to be able to look at that a little bit better is what I'm trying to say. There, it does, it will not hurt moving forward to repaint the rest of the building because we will not touch the rest of the building if we go ahead and remove that structure. So I'd like to do it in two parts. I think it makes sense that way, in my opinion, number-wise, bringing that back to council.
Yeah. So what I was going to say is, I, we have a process as a municipality that we have to go through for all bid letting. I do really want this to be a collaborative effort with you guys on the Historical Society because I, so on the repair piece, I'm, I'm going to trust Mike on the execution on whatever gets us to the right spot, but that doesn't mean that, you know, you guys can't have thoughts and, and we'll adjust if, if need be. The second big thing is, is having the, the local contractor that we do, if there are discretionary decisions that we can make that still allow him to do this at the cost that, that he committed to with us, all for that as well. And then moving on, I, I'm 100% committed to getting us what is on Roxanna's shirt and that's not what's there now. So whatever we got to do and, and, and again, collaborating on how that's done, I, I, I think this is an underutilized asset that we, I would like to see more of a focal point for the square and, and the programming that you guys have done has, has stepped up in the last year.
The replacement of the stairs bid is probably the replacement of just what is there just like. Okay, now the, the bid that I had for the tropical hardwoods to do just the railing and the treads was $9,500. But like I said, if, if you spend that money now, you won't have to do it in 20 years.
Well, I, that point is manifest 10 times over because you saw the report that.
If you can find that budget, that would be a really, you know, possible thing.
Okay. That's a conversation we have to have with the contractor and let him go get the pricing.
Right.
And see what we're dealing with and, and, and just, we'll look at it at that point.
Right. And we'll do that going forward. So I think what we're here to do now is to have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to authorize repairs on Big Creek Schoolhouse. So do I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Second.
And roll call.
Savage?
Doesn't matter.
Otis?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Okay, then, moving on to item number nine, mayor proclamation across Polk City. I urge all my fellow citizens to join me in acknowledging the important role of surgical technologists in the care and recovery of their patients. We honor these men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the residents of Polk City safe and happy. Moving on then to item number 10, reports and particulars. Let's begin with staff. Anything from staff?
All right. First, I got two things for you tonight. One, I want to echo what Stacy said earlier about RV TV. My department has been partnering with Goal Polk City to put on a good show on September 5th. I'm really excited about what we're going to do and I hope everybody comes down and puts on all your cardinal in gold. Only color's optional. But no, it should be a really good time down there. And second, I would like to introduce Allison Vagie. She was the successful candidate of our Parks and Recreation Coordinator position. Allison was an intern in the department in 2022. I didn't scare her enough then. She came back earlier this year to fill a part-time capacity as a recreation specialist. I still haven't scared her away. So I'm thrilled to have her full-time in the department. She's going to be a great addition to Polk City Parks and Rec and to the city of Polk City. So you guys have had a Ron Swanson for five years. You now get a Leslie Knope. So we're really excited to move this department forward. So welcome, Allison.
Thanks, Jason. Anybody else, staff? No? So let's move on to city manager. Chelsea?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
And then council.
So welcome, Allison. The, the doubling of the full-time Parks Department is encouraging trajectory. So I often get accused of talking too much, but even I know not to follow up a mom who is talking about a CPR scene, but I think there are two points that I would like to point out with this call. First, non- like to point out with this call. First, non-on-call duty member Bryce Hipping. Now, it's not to say that, that, the, the other folks that were responding just because they were on duty are any less worthy of praise. That's not true at all, but, and I am biased towards Bryce, because I know him, but I just wanted to call that out, because knowing enough about how these things usually get paged out, it didn't get paged out as something you're gonna get a shiny certificate for and, and whatever else they got. It got paged out for something else. And knowing Bryce, I know that wasn't a factor into his decision. If he was available, he was going. So I wanted to call that out. And, and the other thing, Mary just told me that I think is super important, is the first person to respond to get there was Chief Sipper, correct? So I, I, I just think that's outstanding and doesn't happen in a lot of places where we've got, you know, someone that has to deal with us and argue about budgets and, and ass and all those things. That's still getting their hands dirty. So I wanted to make sure that got pointed out and, and say thank you to everybody else that was here and a part of that.
Yeah, I'll echo that. I, I probably couldn't have spoken earlier. I would have started bawling. But, you know, this is what your teams do sign up for is moments like this. But, you know, it really makes it a reality that someone's absolute worst day and you guys were able to turn that around for them. That is incredible. So, thank you to you and your staffs.
Anybody else?
I have one more thing, I guess, on a different note. Thank you to the Big Creek Historical Society for applying for a Bravo grant. I know that's helping us a little bit with the funding here. So appreciate the efforts that you guys have made. I know we're kind of in a partnership here with the building. So thank you guys for what you've done to try to help move that forward.
So, I got, I have just a couple of things. I, when I came back up here, I told Chelsea, I said, you know, it's awfully hard to move from a life-saving ceremony and award to public comments, because it was very emotional, and we are all very appreciative of all the work that you all did as a team. That's what we are in Polk City, is a big team. So we appreciate that very much. I had a couple of things that I participated in here a few weeks ago, and I'm, I'm very proud of them, and I'm very proud of our community because of the message that they send about our community. One of them was, I went before the Polk County Conservation Board and provided comments, because they had before them a resolution to support the naming of the Polk City Junction Trail. I know that our council has passed a resolution before that, but it was, it was just wonderful to go before them and present to them and answer their questions. One of their questions had to deal with economic development in the city, the potential for economic development, and I preach this all the time, and that is, I think the trail will have a big impact in our community. The second thing is that I wasn't able to go before the High Trestle Trail Advisory Board, but I was asked to provide a letter that would show our support for that body to also support naming the Polk City Junction Trail as well. And they did. And then I took that a step further, and I asked for their support to rename the Oasis. If you know where the Oasis is, you know, a lot of people stop there. And I asked for the Oasis to become the, become Polk City Junction, because Polk City Junction is on the county map, and it just seems to make sense to have the two aligning with one another. The High Trestle Trail Board supported that request. The Polk County Conservation Board also supported that request, but pointed out to me that the Oasis was a made-up name anyway, and so it was very easy to support the, the High Trestle Trail name for that Oasis as well. So from here on out, you'll never hear me speak the words Oasis again. It will always be Polk City Junction. So, I just, I think those are very positive steps forward for our trail, and I just wanted to pass that on to the community. So, with that, I think I will ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Okay, the proclamation goes.